So we'll start basically, you know, this is for a seat in which the current commissioner is not running. It's an open seat. So I want you both to, you know, sort of give us your one-minute elevator pitch for why you are the best candidate to sit on the Tamarack City Commission. And we'll go in alphabetical order. So Ms. Mendelson, start us off, please.
Okay. Thank you for having, for giving me the opportunity to be here. I appreciate it. I'm invested in my city. I am the only candidate who has been to almost every single commission meeting and event in the past two years. The people know me and they trust me. And I have prior experiences which assist in helping to bring some decorum to the commission. I am also the only candidate who is able to devote 100% of my time to this responsibility. And in doing so, I'm very grateful. I've been endorsed by the Dolphin Democrats last night and by the firefighters and AFL-CIO and one of the Tamarack Commissioners. And, you know, what I don't know, I will learn. I'm a hard worker and as I said, the people trust me. I am a, an out-of-the-box thinker and I think I can be an asset to, to bring what is needed to the city. And I'm one of the people. So they, you know, as I said, they trust me.
Carol, which... Could you tell us which Tamarack City Commissioner that is?
Yes, Elvin Villalobos.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mountford, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here as well. Is, I've been invested in this city for a long time. I've been here, I'll be 19 years in October. I've sat on, I'm a current trustee on the Police Pension Fund. I have sat on the planning board. I have been on the COPS program. So I spent four hours a night riding around the neighborhood trying to keep it safe. And I also did the Tamarack University. So intimately, I know the city well. I as well have been on many commission meetings as well, but I usually do it via video. But the last few, I've been in person, which is painful sometimes. But I'm an advocate for the city. I'm invested in this city. And, you know, I'm going to represent the city very well with a lot of integrity. And, you know, respect is earned, but, you know, it's a situation that will be very good in the long run. And we need to get this dais back under control. And I think if we can bring decorum in, and I know I can do that with my vast experience with charitable work, with city work and being involved with the city the past few years inside. And I'm not endorsed by any of the city commissioners or mayor, and I don't want to be, to be perfectly blunt, because, you know, this will be run on my terms and it will be run a clean campaign. And I don't have to be beholden of owing anybody anything. So...
Mr. Mountford, what's the first thing he can do to get the dais under control?
That's a good, that's a great question. And to get the dais under control, I think it has to do with respect. We know most of the commissioners that are on, involved with it. And I think it's really talking to them beforehand and really getting the meetings back under control from the standpoint of it not being a cowboy show.
Hold on just one second. Talking to them beforehand?
Well, what I'm not, not about what's going on with the meeting, but I'm just talking about in general, about decorum from the standpoint of being respectful, not anything else. But, you know, the issue is with the whole commission, it's one or two folks that are out of control. And, you know, the way to defeat that is, is votes too, you know? So it's, you're never going to be able to put the reins on somebody directly and you're not going to be able to do it at one of those meetings. It's going to be very difficult.
Give us a quick, very brief, I'm saying, you know, 100 words or less. Give us a quick working definition of the Sunshine Law and how it applies to Tamarack City Government.
Well, the Sunshine Law, you cannot discuss business outside of the commission meetings. And bottom line, that's, that's the key is, you know, from the Sunshine Law standpoint, is we can't discuss issues prior to going into the meetings. And so that would be my 100 words or less on it.
Okay. Carol Mendelson, anything that Mr. Mountford omitted there on a working definition of the Sunshine Law?
No, I think that the workshops are critical to having discussions about what is important prior to the actual commission meeting in order to promote civility and, and decision-making so that it doesn't become as confrontational at the actual commission meeting. I also would promote, when I talk about civility, I absolutely promote some training and workshops for the commissioners in, in appropriate conflict mediation or whatever the means might be so that there can be some sort of working arrangement. I have always worked in my former position towards that, towards compromise, you know, or certainly if not compromise, you know, you try for a win-win, but, but certainly to at least have it civil.
When you say your former position, you're referring to what exactly?
I was an administrator in the public school system for near, for 28 years. And I also represented the school board lobbying for educational reform. I was on executive boards with very sensitive issues, fragile situations where there had to be sense, not only sensitivity, but just like you have in the commission, dealing with the Sunshine Law where you can't discuss it outside of those meetings.
In your work for the Broward County School District, did you have to personally interact with school board members?
No, not with the school board members. I did not.
Who was your boss?
Various principals that I worked with and the area director who was there. But on the, in the positions that I was afforded, I worked with the Broward Principal and Assistant Principals Association with Lisa Maxwell and, and with others within the system.
Right, okay. Very good.
And actually, if I can correct myself, when I was on the executive board, I did work with the superintendent at that time of schools because he, he was often present in those meetings.
And that would have been which superintendent?
That would have been Jim Nader.
Nader, okay, sure, yep.
And, yeah, if I may, if I may. In the role that I had, I facilitated all meetings for assistant principals. So I had to work with the directors and the, the area superintendents in order to facilitate those trainings. So it would have been a variety of South Central, working with Desmond Blackburn, working with Harry LaCava, working with...
Got it, okay. Okay, you've answered the question, I appreciate it. Mr. Mountford, this is District Three in Tamarack, am I right?
District Four.
I apologize, District Four.
Not a problem.
Give us a, give us a quick, especially for the uninitiated who, who maybe only visit Tamarack occasionally, what, what communities, what characteristics distinguish District Four from the other parts of the city?
I mean, I think there's a good differentiation between the districts. Obviously, the country clubs within the District Four, you know, which has been re-done and done very nicely. And I'm talking about Woodmont Country Club. Is, that was done very nicely, they broke it down to 27 holes. So it is a golf course community. From the standpoint, you have a lot of subdevelopments, the Estates, La Florae, La Reserve, Waterford Isle. There's a, there's a ton of different subs within the committed, uh, community as well as Westwood, Fair, Fairbrook, you know, and these others as well.
Okay.
So it's a very diverse, diverse group.
Diverse how?
Well, from the, from the standpoint, you have different home values ranging from now these Pulte homes are $700 to a million dollars near the golf course to all the way down through to the older, you know, 55-plus communities. So there's a wide range of spans in, in home values, which, which I think is, is great because it brings a diverse group of folks into the, the mix of the community. And, you know, I moved into this community when it was predominantly older Jewish and the neighborhood that I live in, it, you know, was definitely that way. And I loved it because we don't have children and, and it was, was a great scenario for us. It worked very well. And, you know, now it's changing. A lot of, a lot of younger folks are coming in. I think the median age of Tamarack now is 49 years old. So the communities are changing that way as well. So I think it's becoming a little bit more vibrant than it was. So I'm looking forward, you know, to that and to District Four. I think District Four has a lot of potential and it's really a great district to be in.
Yeah, I was going to ask you that very question. Are there a lot of families with young kids in District Four?
There, there's starting to be. Is, I mean, it's, it's starting, you know, the growth of that has started, I would say, over the past five years. I've seen a lot of, more, more of the diversity with families moving in with younger children. And including my development, which was predominantly older and now it's, it's changed quite a bit. I'd say it's about 50/50.
Right. Have you been walking door-to-door in District Four?
I'm going to be perfectly honest with you. I was in a life-altering accident 10 years ago. And when I say life-altering, I've had 30 surgeries in 10 years on my feet and ankles. So have I walked door-to-door? Yes. Has, have I walked as much door-to-door as I want? No. Because if I walk door-to-door one day, I'm not walking the next two days. So it's been very difficult for me from that aspect, but I do have some people that are helping me.
Okay, understood. Well, and I'll get to Carol Mendelson in a second on the same point. But to the extent you have walked door-to-door and met constituents or potential constituents one-on-one, what, what is a recurring theme of what you hear from people in Tamarack? What is on their minds?
Expansion is probably the, the one thing we hear, but it's, you know, crime and expansion are the two really that are the, on the minds of most people here.
What do you mean expansion?
Well, when I mean growth, is, is building.
Okay.
Is, you know, right, right around the block from me, there's a 300-unit apartment that, complex that's going up. And, you know, people are not happy with that type of growth in the city because they pers, the problem is education, is people aren't getting educated on what it does for them and what it's going to mean in the long run to them. So the constituents don't underst, they're just told, we're going to build this property. You know, and that's about the extent of it. They're not educated on why it's coming in, what it's going to bring to the city, what it's going to benefit them as well, you know, with tax-wise, et cetera. So I'm hearing a lot of that. The people are worried about safety and I don't blame them. I mean, we're seeing this nationally as well as citywide. And I think with what's going to happen moving into the future here, if we get, we move into recessionary times, we move into higher interest rates, which we know we're going to, all these things are going to culminate and if we can't get homeowners insurance under, under wraps as well, we're going to have major issues and, and people are going to be not able to live in a home here and they're not going to be able to sustain how the crime level's going to move up because of recessionary times.
Yeah. Well, one last quick point. This, this 300-unit apartment building going up around the corner from you, do you have any idea what the range of rents is in that building, what they're going to be?
You know, I, I can just tell you what basically around the area has been and it ranges anywhere from 1,900 to 3,700 a month. So I don't know specifically on this particular building because it's just going up, but I, you know, obviously you can find that stuff.
$3,000 a month to rent an apartment in Tamarack, right?
There are certain areas, yes.
Okay. Carol Mendelson, Carol, have you been walking door-to-door?
I have been walking door-to-door and sweating my head off on a constant basis and loving it. But the people know me regardless and the homes that I, that I've gone to and I'm knocking on doors and talking to them, I, I have to say, you know, this is a, District Four is absolutely very diverse. You have your senior population who I think we are indebted to because there'd be no Tamarack without them. And now you have your, your younger families who are moving in with, with children. And so you have a lot of diversity with that and, and things that we really need to work on for, for both, for, for the young and for the seniors. When I knock on doors and I talk to the people, because I'm a senior, and the first thing I say is, I'm, I'm one of you. I, I want to save our money. I want my money in my pocket and I want to know where the money is going. And no matter whether you're a young family or a senior, these are difficult times and people want to know where every dollar is going, particularly with the world the way it is. The apartments that, that Mr. Mountford is speaking of, I have met with some people regarding that who had concerns about it going up. And the information that I gathered was that the rents were going to be 1,700 to 3,000. They are one-to-three-bedroom apartments. Some of them will be targeted for affordable apartments because we need to consider our service people and having places for them. I'm not, I don't remember what else you asked, sir, I'm sorry.
I'll get back to it. What's, what's the name of that complex, that rental complex we've both been talking about?
Oh, you know what? It escapes me at the moment.
Mr. Mountford, do you know?
I can't recall it either. Is, I just...
Yep.
It'll come back to me. I know it's a classroom on the greens.
You ever notice how every big apartment or a big housing complex in Broward, all the names sound the same?
Yeah.
You know, it's Osprey Point, Pelican Point. Carol Mendelson, have you ever run for elective office before?
Never. I will tell you, this was never on my bucket list and I say that all the time. I retired from the school system. I, I went through Tamarack University. I started going to the meeting, the commission meetings and I, I actually spoke several times. When I heard and saw what was going on, I, I said, no, 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 this, this can't be. I, I can't sit here and allow this. I have to be the voice of the people. I have to do something.
Well, good for you. That's great. By the way, who'd make a, who, in light of that, in light of making things more productive, more positive, who'd make a better mayor, Michelle Gomez or Mike Gellin?
Absolutely, unequivocally, without a shadow of a doubt, Michelle Gomez.
Okay.
She is a people, well, she is a people person. She cares about the city. She wants to work and, and work with compromise. She knows her numbers. She has dealt with intimidation from others on the commission. I can't say enough wonderful things about her in, in light of the adversity that she has had to deal with, quite frankly, and, and remaining, in my estimation, a class act and a professional. I think when you're in a leadership position, you're held to a higher standard and, and to me, it is unconscionable to create chaos and dissension and, and say very distasteful things.
Okay. Mr. Mountford, do you share Ms. Mendelson's view that, that there's only one choice for mayor here and that's Michelle Gomez?
I agree 100% is I've known Michelle for a long time and I, I think she's definitely the person for it, for another term. You know, I appreciate her integrity and credibility. That's the way I've always run my businesses and done everything in business and charitable organizations is with integrity and that type of commitment. And I respect her for that. And I think 100% as well is, she's a straight shooter. She tells it the way it is. That's another characteristic I really like in a person. And she's going to be great in the long term.
Okay. I, I, I've got my opinion hat on firmly here at the Sun Sentinel. I commend you both for the, showing the leadership on this and sticking your necks out, but you're both violating one of the fundamental rules of politics. And that is you're taking a stand in somebody else's race when you have a race of your own to run. So Carol, why do you feel so strongly about this? It's, it'd be much easier, we just had the District Two candidates and we couldn't get any of them to take a stand on this, on this question. So you're, you're sticking your neck out.
Well, you know, I, I appreciate what you said and, and you're right. And if legally I have made an error, which I don't think I have, I...
No, it's not, it's not legal. It's, it's just in a political sense, but go ahead, go ahead.
Well, you know, I am who I am. What you see is what you get and I have to say it as I see it. You know, and I have to support what I think is right and have the integrity to do that and, and to back what I think is right. The same way I knew that when I spoke at the public hearings and said what I did to the commission, which wasn't very nice, but I was extremely professional. And, and I knew that I would ha, gain, you know, have some enemies on the commission as a result of it. And I intend to speak again at the next commission meeting based on what took place at the last meeting because it was disgraceful. I have to speak up and do what I think is right. And, and if that cost me votes, for example, you know, I have to be true to myself and to the city and do what I think is right. I'm doing this, I know, for all the right reasons. I'm not doing it for, for the money. I'm doing it because I, I've lived here for more than 20 years. I care about the city. We have a lot of work to do and, and I think I can be a tremendous asset to Michelle and to the others on the commission for the good of the city.
Okay.
So that's why I say what I say.
Let me, very good. Let me, let me open the floor and let me ask my colleague Dan Sweeney for questions.
Yeah, real quick, Ms. Mendelson, you, you said you've been endorsed by Mr. Villalobos. We didn't ask whether any of the other commissioners in the last race had been endorsed by anybody, but Landawatt has received a, a donation from Villalobos. So I'm going to go ahead and assume that counts for, for some support. Have you campaigned with Mr. Landawatt or have you, you know, when you go to door-to-door, are you guys campaigning together or as a ticket?
No, not at all. I've seen him at a few functions, very few. We've messaged back and forth a couple of times, but that, that's it.
Okay. Fair enough. You've both said that Gomez is the best choice for mayor. You've both in your questionnaires said civility is something that needs to return to the What do you think is the, the crux of this, this issue that, you know, that you can't seem to, to find a whole lot of cohesiveness and agreement on, on the city, on the city commission currently? Ms. Mendelson, what do you think?
Um, I think, I think it's a dysfunctional commission, which I have said publicly. I think that something needs to be done, obviously, whether, as I stated, some sort of professional development, mediation of some kind for the commission outside of dealing with the issues. I think you have some people that, I, I think that the lack of civility is because you have, you have people who are bullying others and refuse to compromise or do what is right for the good of the city.
Who's bullying others on the city commission?
I think that two of our male commissioners are, are bullying others and intimidating somebody else as well, sadly. And I think that the city sees that. I think the residents see it. I, I think it's quite unfortunate because a perfect example of that would be the last meeting when, when the millage rate had to be discussed because there was absolutely no compromise in sight. And it, and it was at a point where some were going to actually allow the city to, to be in such dire straits where we would lose over $11 million in letters to everyone. And so it was almost as if others were held hostage, quite frankly. And that's something I am going to publicly address at the next commission, so I don't have a problem saying it. We need to look at what's good for the city and not individually.
I mean, when you say two male commissioners, you're backed by one of three male commissioners. So I mean, you know, you can do the math on who you're talking about. Mr. Mountford, same question. What is at the heart of, of what is, as your opponent says, a dysfunctional city commission?
You know, from the standpoint of dysfunctional, it's just, there's always conflict because I think there are some, and unfortunately, I just think there's some self-serving issues that are, are involved with the, with the dais and, you know, is there an answer to it all? You know, it's a difficult thing because I think there's always going to be conflict with the current regime, with, with where it's at. And I think it's not going to go away. And to be perfectly blunt, the reason that I'm running, it's, it's either changes are going to be made or I'm going to be one of the guys that's probably going to move out of the city. And I felt that after 19 years in the city, that time for a change, time to bring some integrity back to, to the whole dais and, and move forward. And is that realistically, realistic? I'm sorry, I don't know. Is, I can't answer that question, but I hope it is.
All right. Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, those are, those are, those are good, good answers and good, very revealing. Mr. Mountford, there's a stalemate at the moment between the city and 13th floor investments on basically the future of the, is, I think it's the, I think it's the Woodlands Country Club, which they want to build, they want to build more than 300 luxury single-family homes on. What is your position on how that project should proceed?
Well, my, my position on it is, is one, I'm not privy to all the internal workings of what's going on there or what the negotiations are. I know there's a lawsuit involved right now, just from what I hear. The, the aspect of it is that I would look at it from the standpoint, you know, I had to deal with it where I'm at because they built it back behind me, you know? So I had to deal with it here. Originally, they wanted to put up 500 homes. We fought it and we got it down to 152. So, you know, the question becomes is, are these single lot line homes, are they, you know, luxury homes like these Pulte homes that are going up? I mean, there's, there's factors involved here that I don't think we're privy to at this stage to make that decision. But I, one thing I will tell you is that it would be a yes or no decision for me once I got all the facts. And, you know, I, I can't really say which way I'm leaning because I don't have all the facts. If I had the facts, I would tell you.
Generally speaking, is Tamarack overbuilt?
I think that we have to be careful. It's, I think we're getting to the stage that it's going to be overbuilt because we need to keep some green space in this community. And if we keep on the path that we're going, there's going to be no green space. You get, you get a 12-mile, you know, city here. And, you know, I get it that, you know, you have to bring revenues in and to bring revenues in, you know, building's one of them. But, you know, we also got to be cognizant of businesses too. We're not attracting a ton of businesses besides the big, big folks out west, but, you know, the mom and pops and the restaurants, et cetera, we're not attracting.
Yeah, no, the, the tax burden, the tax burden disproportionately falls on homeowners and condo owners for sure. Ms. Mendelson, what is your position pro or con on what, how to proceed with the, with the Woodlands Country Club project?
Well, the best answer that I can give you is that I know it's a quasi-judicial issue and really can't even, to my knowledge, be addressed. I think that, having said that, no matter what, what the end result is, 50% will be happy, 50% won't be happy. I think that whatever takes place, my hope would be that we're going to look at and hear what the residents have to say and what's in the best interests of the city and have some sort of compromise so that we can make the best decision for everyone. And everybody isn't going to be happy with it. But sadly, that's life and when you look at it and you look at the pros and the cons, it has to be weighed. And I think as we have it right now, the resident input is critical. And I, I just think that we've got to put it all together to make that decision. I can't make a decision about that right at this point and I wouldn't...
Fair enough. Carol, I just want your philosophy about something. If, because you've been to a lot of commission meetings, if 250 people pack the city commission chambers with signs, with chants, with whatever, and regardless of what, I'm not talking about the Woodlands here, I'm talking about any issue, any, any issue in the community, do you sort of feel like I'm going to have to go with the residents? I mean, they're mobilized, they're angry, they want something done, they must be right, that, that if enough people make enough noise, you're going to vote their way?
Well, you know, sadly, I always say the person that screams the loudest gets their way, but that doesn't intimidate me or frighten me. You know, I'd love to have a win-win situation and a compromise if 250 people were sitting in that chamber and there was an issue. I would do the very best that I could do to bring it together to, to lower the level of the situation and perhaps have a task force organized, groups together so that it could be... and perhaps have a task force organized, groups together so that it could be addressed and looked at and viewed. But no, I would ne, I, 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 I never say never, but it's not in my nature to, to fold to the will of the people just because there's a mob.
Okay, and Mr. Mountford, I want you, again, I'd like your philosophy. I don't have any particular issue in mind. I'm just saying that, um, you know, uh, and, and, and let's just say these are District Four residents. These are your constituents and they show up en masse about something on a Tuesday night and they want something done. Are you going to be inclined to, to bow to their demands?
No, is, um, my philosophy on this is, is again, it's, I'm a facts guy. You know, so if the facts dictate what they have a valid issue with, you know, I'll take that into consideration and also take the city's stance in consideration too. But facts are facts and, and, you know, if somebody, 250 people come in, there's going to be facts behind that mission, so to speak. So let's get the facts together and, um, you know, then the decision's made. But I'm a yes or no guy, uh, been that way forever in business. And, um, you know, I've been in a lot of, of negotiations and the, the whole issue is, is I'm not going to bow down just because there's 250 residents that are upset. I would hope that prior to something like that happening, that residents would have, you know, either come together like at the country club like they used to do when the housing issues were going on before it hit the, hit the city commission.
Okay. Very good. Uh, I've got a question for Carol Mendelson. Uh, Carol, the former, as you know, the former city manager, Michael Cernich, is awaiting trial on multiple felony counts, uh, conspiracy, bank fraud, other things. Uh, he's no longer the city manager, but I believe I have this correct. After the charges surfaced and the case, the corruption case surfaced, uh, involving Michael Cernich, there was a motion to terminate him, but Mayor Michelle Gomez, uh, advocated a suspension without pay, citing the provisions in his contract. I'm asking you, Carol, who was right? The commissioners who wanted to fire Cernich or Mayor Gomez who wanted to suspend him without pay?
Well, my, my feeling on that, and I believe I mentioned that when I spoke publicly, um, we live in a country where you are innocent until proven guilty. And I agree with the decision that the mayor had come up with since it was to be a suspension without pay. And then the legal teams and those that have the ability to, to look into it and get all of the facts and, and put it all together. I, in my opinion, that was the way I would have preferred to see it go. So yes, I think that the mayor was correct.
Okay. Mr. Mountford, what's your opinion about this same set of circumstances?
Well, I've been around that unfortunately in business. Um, and, you know, it's true, innocent until proven guilty. Um, you know, I've seen a lot of suspensions without pay. I, I don't think it makes a stance from the city. I think it's doing the fair thing by doing that. Um, so I, I can't argue the point that, um, she made the decision or her stance was to, to suspend without pay. I think that would have been probably the proper thing to do until the final hammer drops on it.
Okay, very good. I really appreciate your responses and I've tried to keep things moving, but also give you ample time to answer the questions. But I've pretty much run through the list of questions I wanted to ask. I will let each of you make a brief, and I mean brief, 60 to 90 seconds closing statement. You know, your best case as to why, I'm not asking you to criticize your opponent, but I am asking you to tell us why you're better than, you're the best candidate in the race. And, uh, so, and let's begin with you, Carol Mendelson.
Thank you. Um, I believe I'm the best candidate for District Four because I am invested in this community. I have lived here for almost 20 years. I know the people. Um, I, I have not come to know them only from knocking on doors. I've been at all of the events. I've been at all of the commission meetings. Um, I can give 100% of my time to this responsibility. Um, I feel that we have a very diverse, um, community in District Four. You have your, your middle income people, you have your lower. I think it all needs to be brought together. And I'm out there and they, I, I listen to people. And I also feel that the main issues are civility, fiscal accountability and communication. It has to be effective. The people have to trust you before you can do anything else. And I'm that person who would be best served on the board and also to be an asset to the commission to, to have it civil and do the right thing for the city, for the city issues to be handled. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Thanks very much, Carol. Uh, David Mountford, you have the floor, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you. Is, um, I feel that I'd be the right commissioner from the standpoint of one is my involvement within the city. Is it hasn't been just two years. It's been quite a number of years that I've been involved with the city. One of the things I'd have to give up is being trustee on the police pension fund. I really enjoy that, but I'd be willing to give it up if elected. Um, from the standpoint of being in the community almost, well, 19 years in October, is that, um, I'm invested in this community as well. And I know a lot of the folks in the community and I'm an advocate for them as well. And, and the, the point of the matter is, is again, facts based is, is when the facts are brought to table and when the facts come down the pike, I'm running in a, a campaign that isn't backed by other commissioners or anybody else. I'm doing this on my own. And I think that carries clout from the standpoint is I'm not beholden to anybody. The other aspects are too, is from the bringing decorum to the dais. I know I can do that, um, from the standpoint of what the city needs. Again, addressing the safety and crime issues, huge. Um, addressing the decorum issue, huge. Addressing, um, um, transparency is huge is, you know, I don't think very much is transparent. And the yield to residents is, you know, it's a term I'm bringing up and, and yield to resident. The residents don't always understand what's, what's going on within the, the commission or within the city from the standpoint of growth or, or where we're going or how budgetary, you know, they don't come to the budget meetings, which they can. They're entitled to, but they don't. But they need to understand these things because it affects them in an overall aspect. And if we're going to grow the city, it is a diverse city and it's going to continue to get diverse. It, it's not going to, um,
Okay.
You know, and I'm a big senior guy too, but, um, as well as I'm getting there is, um, but.
I want to be fair on time here, so.
Yep.
All right. Best of luck to both of you. Thank you both for attending this morning, uh, so much. Uh, Tamarack needs more adults in the room. Uh, hopefully one, one of you will be one of them. So, uh, I want to say thanks on behalf of my colleague, Dan Sweeney in the Sun Sentinel. Thanks for participating. Best of luck to you both.
Thank you very much.
All right, you're welcome. See you.